I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, February the 18th, 2019. I want to welcome everyone, very glad to have with us, excuse me, very glad to have with us tonight Pastor B. Dewayne Harden of the Embassy ATL located at 2030 Powers Ferry Road who will come forward at this time, give our invocation and also lead us in the pledge of the flag. Would anyone please rise?
Father, we want to thank you for this day. We want to thank you for your love, your kindness. Father, the climate of our nation requires that each city, each area begin to seek your face, find answers and solutions, and Father, put us right down the correct path. And so we pray for wisdom to be imparted tonight. We pray for grace, and we pray, Lord, that your hand would rest heavily upon the city of Smyrna. We give you glory, and we thank you in advance for advancing this community, for your glory to be revealed. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen. Amen. Come on, let's pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I hope I'm not out of line by saying this. Your current location for your church is on Powers Ferry, but it's my understanding that you're moving to Smyrna. And we're, yep, and we're glad to have you in the city limits. So, thank you, Dewayne, so much. Agenda changes. We do not have any one note. Councilman Fennel is out of town. He's coming back. It'll be sort of like, I hope it'll be like when I mentioned that Mr. Welsch was out of town, then I looked over and he was sitting there. So, Councilman Fennel may make it back, but if he does, okay. If he doesn't, we're not, we're not going to wait on him. So, mail report, there's nothing in that, on that. Item four, land issues, zonings and annexations. Item A, V-19-002, public hearing, appeal to decision of the License and Variance Board for request, V-19-002, allow reduction of side setback from 35 feet to 10 feet. Land Lot 594, 0.53 acres at 1639 Corn Road. The Woodbury Group, David Woodbury. This is a public hearing, and Mr. Cochran, you want to, it's not an appeal, it is a...
Just a...
And I do know, before we ask if there's any opposition or anyone wants to make a comment, I do know there has been some interest from the deaf church that's located on Corn Road, or Johnquill, I'm sorry. And there, we've got somebody here that's signing, I think that's right. So we may take a little bit longer to make sure everybody gets the right message. So, I'm going to ask, this is a public hearing. First, is the applicant here? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this variance request? Those that want to speak or sign, you come forward at this time, and Mr. Cochran, you're the minister of the oath. Anyone that wants to speak, even if you decide you don't want to speak, I just want to swear folks in just one time. So, anyone that wants to make a comment on this particular hearing. Yep. Okay. And this is in Ms. Bluestein's area. I'm sure she's going to want to make, let Ken Sudworth make a presentation, but not yet, not yet.
Mr. Sudworth, do you want to come and make sure we know what we're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, they put it up on the screen. What we have in front of you is a variance request, and as Mr. Cochran stated, the process to get it from the License and Variance Board to you is an appeal, but, but your decision tonight, as he explained, is back to the very beginning on that. So, this is a variance request, did come to us from the Woodbury Group. License and Variance Board heard it January 9th. That decision was to approve that request, 3-0, and obviously, we're here tonight. Already stated, it's 1639 Corn Road, is the proposed development. It's a little over a half acre of land. It's currently a vacant lot. They're proposing a five-unit townhome, and the current zoning is RM12, which is a multi-family classification that would allow this type of development. Just from the aerial imagery, we have highlighted on the screen in yellow the subject property. We've also, in this slide, we have superimposed the proposed five-unit development on that subject property as well as the existing church, which is next door. Now, the applicant is proposing to build that five-unit townhome within the density that is permitted within that RM12 classification. It actually comes out to 9.43 units per acre. What is under consideration tonight is a side yard reduction from 35 feet to 10 feet, and as stated earlier, the Variance Board heard it earlier in January, and the property owner that's adjacent to the request, i.e. the church, has appealed that request to you for consideration. The proposed site plan shows the location of the five units. As you can see, to square the five units up with Corn Road, it actually creates an angle so that the smallest setback would be at the far rear, and that would be 10 feet. That front corner is 30 feet from the property line, and more or less, the distance between those two points is about 50 feet, if I recall the length of those units. Now, the subject property has an irregular shape, as we've already seen, the western side of the property has some topographic changes, western side of the property, meaning that side that's opposite furthest away from where the church sits. As I've already mentioned, the side property line in terms of that setback, due to the angle, is 10 feet to 30 feet. As part of the license and variance review, they put a condition on there that the applicant has agreed to, and that is to install soundproof material on that external wall on that last unit or first unit, whichever way you want to count that. All units are required to have a sprinkler system, and the applicant has agreed to shift the units west, if possible, after a hydrology study. As already seen, the applicant, the original applicant is here for this, and he might be able to give you a better explanation of where he is with the hydrology study at this point. Just some pictures of the subject property. The top picture is indeed the subject property. As you can see, it's an undeveloped tract of land. The lower picture is taken from the property, looking back towards the church. This is the adjacent property. The top picture reflects the church, taken from Corn Road, and the lower picture is shooting down the property line. You can see that there is a piece of tape, survey tape, that was left, and remember that there is an angle to this so that as that line goes back, the church and the configuration of the church itself gets a little bit closer to that property line on their side.
So, at what point is, are they the closest? How many, how many feet would that be?
They, at the closest point, they'd be two feet from, from their, or the joint property line.
Two feet from the, from their building?
Yes. The building at furthest from the, going away from the street, but further than we can actually show in that picture, it actually gets to within two feet of the property line. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions of Mr. Sudworth? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear from the, from the applicant. Mr. Woodbury, if you'd just tell us who you are and...
Sure. Good evening. I'm David Woodbury, I'm with the Woodbury Group as the applicant, and as staff just outlined, that we are seeking variances to build the proposed townhome building on the subject property. The application has gone before the staff, they recommended approval, and then went before the Variance Board, which unanimously voted to approve the variances. And, and as pointed out, we did agree to add some insulation within the building, not, not, I think it said on the building, but it would be in the walls to mitigate any of the sound concerns that the adjacent property owner, the church, would have. My understanding is that their main concern is that the, the volume of their services during the music portion of it is, is loud, and, and their concern is that they would disturb the new residents here. And so we think that, although that would be unlikely, we think the, the sound mitigation within the walls would actually make that to an extent, you know, would help to extend, to the extent that it would not be an issue whatsoever. And regarding the, the comment about shifting the building away towards the west from the church farther, and the hydrology study, we would need to actually have it engineered. The site would need, the stormwater would need to be engineered completely and go before the city review and engineering department to know how far we can move it. But that is something that we're open to do, to doing, and be happy to do it, but we won't know how far we can move it until that is finally, you know, completely engineered from a stormwater perspective. So that's, I just thank you for your time and consideration, and, and ask that you approve it based on the recommendation of the board and the Variance Board and, and the staff.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Woodbury?
Mr. Woodbury, the hydrology study that you're going to have done, is that something that's in the process now, or?
Not, not yet, and the hydrology study is part of the, the full engineering, and that would begin after the site, after the development was approved.
Okay. Any other? Mr. Rowe?
Thanks for coming tonight. A couple of questions for you. How will you make it known to prospective buyers of the situation with the church? And the church will probably describe some concerns that they have tonight. How will we have some confidence that the buyers will clearly know the situation?
Well, that's, that's done in the marketing part of it, you know, as, when you're adjacent to a commercial, I think there's own commercial, when you're adjacent to a commercial property and uses, whether it's a business across the street or a church, you know, it would, you know, it will be, that will be pointed out as well as the steps we took to mitigate that issue.
Because a really bad situation, of course, would be that a buyer is, doesn't experience perhaps their Sunday service or whenever the service is, and down the road, and then turns into a problem for the church.
Yes, and again, for it, for it to be a problem, the, the music would have to, you know, go through their, their walls and through, carry the distance outside, and then go through that one unit. And it would only affect, you know, if it was, if it was in effect, which I don't believe it will be, it would only affect that one resident, that one homeowner on that end closest to the church, because that's, that's where the sound is going. And once it hits that end of that building, you know, it's, it's impossible for it to carry through, you know, the whole building.
And I'm not sure, when it does get, excuse me, when it does get to a certain level of any noise, you know, we have a, we have a level that we, that we would have to send somebody up with a decimal meter to see if the noise was over what our minimum was, so...
A sound ordinance.
Yeah. So, I don't know if you can do that with the base, because I understand the base is what they really turn up, so... But those folks will know about it. It's not like something, they'll, they'll buy the, the end unit and then find out that there was a church there, because the church has been there.
That's correct.
Yeah, right.
One other, what's this, what's your expected sale price of the unit?
Mid 300s.
What risks do you see down there? It's an area that's, needs some, ripe for some improvement and development.
It needs a little attention, that, that part of Corn Road. You know, I actually think that the fact that it's where it is, is a positive, because it's quiet, you know, you're not getting through traffic, you're not getting any of that. There's a nice wooded area across the, you know, right across the street that it's going to maintain, you know, stay that way, so you're not worried about what's going to be built across from you. So we think it's going to be a nice little, you know, hidden gem, so to speak.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one. Mr. Woodbury, the, the way that the building is situated on the property, it's just the back right corner that's the close, that's, that's the closest.
That's correct.
The rest of it is...
The front is, I think, about 30 feet off the line, and it's just that back corner. And again, that could be moved, shifted, depending on what the final stormwater plan is and improved by the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Woodbury, what is the square footage on these?
It can be approximately 2,200, and it could be more, depending on how much the buyer wanted to, to build out.
And also, what is, what about a price point?
Mid 300s. The mid 300,000s.
Now, so they'll, they'll actually be cheaper than the ones that are behind the junkel sporting goods?
Yes, ma'am.
How are those coming along?
Well, if it ever stops raining.
All I see is a bulldozer out there going around tearing up the concrete that was all over the place.
Yeah, we, we waited to, to get a couple of weeks of dry weather, and, and we got a couple of weeks, but since then, it's been raining.
We have dry weather about every, every two weeks or three weeks, so, but we're not having snow, so we won't, we won't complain. Thank you.
Did we pull up the elevations of the, of the townhomes? Do we have that? Did we show that? Did you show that, Ken?
We didn't, I did not put that in the PowerPoint, so I did not show those elevations, which you all have them as part of your package, or the elevations on that. But I did not put that in the presentation.
They're nice units. I mean, I'm looking forward not having 18-wheelers back up in there and school buses and a number of, excuse me, I'm sorry, a number of different things, so... Okay. Anyone have any other questions?
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Woodbury. One of my questions is, is part of this property in the floodplain a, a part of the property where the townhomes will be, or is it just across from...
Yes, it's not. It's, it's, if there is any in the area, it would be across the street along the creek.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I had is just a, sort of a concern with the, as far as the, the base level, is the way I understand it, in terms of the units. I just know that in the, the ward that I represent, Ward 5, I do get a lot of calls about noise levels of a, of a, I guess it's like a club on South Cobb Drive, and the homes are really quite far from that, but people sort of feel the vibration in, in the base, and so that was what I was, you know, kind of concerned, that it may affect more than just that one end unit, but I'm not sure, because I haven't really heard the, you know, the way the church's music is played and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions? I do want to mention this one. At one time, that was a set of apartments, I think, there, there's still a driveway there, so there was, there was a building, maybe two buildings there.
I think it was before they, that those old apartments, the mosaic replaced them.
Right, yeah. So there, so there was buildings up there, what you're planning on building a townhome. All right, any other questions? I apologize. All right. For those folks that were sworn in that would like to come give testimony, if you'll step up, tell us who you are, where you live at, and comments that you'd like to make.
My name is Paul Kelly. My dad is the pastor of Deaf Baptist Church. I live up in Canton, Georgia. My dad asked me to come and just go over a couple of points that we wanted you guys to consider today before he comes up here. The first one, you know, we, you guys kind of already talked about it, was the, the noise issue. One of the things that kind of came to mind while you guys were talking is, you know, I don't know if there's going to be a back porch or on the, the backside of the property to where, you know, the, the insulation that they said they would install, that wouldn't be able to prevent the noise going to the back porch, and so it could be a nuisance to somebody, you know, on their Sunday mornings. You know, I also have concerns that, you know, you know, unless you're there, between looking at the, the place between the very specific time of, you know, 10:30 and 11 o'clock when they play the 30, 30 minutes of worship, that you wouldn't actually have a buyer know to the full extent what the music is going to be like, because I would think, you know, most people's presumption is, oh, deaf people are going to be next door, it's going to be very quiet. But, you know, reality, deaf people, they can't hear when they're making noise, so when they're outside, they're making a lot more noise, you know, because they don't, they don't realize it, so when they're outside, even in the, the parking lot, you know, they're, they're making noise, but, you know, and then with the music, it's, it's going to be louder than what your normal church music would, would be like, so, you know, I don't, I don't know if there's any kind of remedy that, you know, what, what they can come up to really make sure that the buyers of the property know what they're getting into when, when they buy the property. And, and even if those particular buyers do know, who's to say that they might not, you know, be upset six months in, a year in, or whatever, and then try to sell the property to an unsuspecting buyer in the future, and then you have the problem come up? So, you know, I'm not really sure how we'd remedy that, but that was the main thing. And then just, you know, our, our parking is right there. In, in the past, they had a festival, they had like over, I think like 100 deaf people there one time, and so they, they set up stuff outside, like games and stuff, and so, you know, I don't, I don't know if that kind of stuff would be a nuisance for people that are only, you know, 10 feet away from the property line, and, and we didn't realize it would be as close as two feet, if, if I heard that right, the back corner. And we also have concerns about, you know, just there's a fire on their property, what that might do to our property. I know when we were at the previous meeting, the, the, I guess it was the fire chief was there, he, he assured us that we wouldn't have to worry about that, but that's, that's still a concern of ours. And that's really all that I had. I think my dad wanted to come up and say a couple of things, so...
Okay. Thank you. You needed to put the timer on. Anyone else? Come on, come up.
Good evening. I am Dr. Bruce Kelly. I am the deaf pastor of the Deaf Baptist Church, and I am thankful that you have allowed me to step forward to make comments. I thank you for listening to us. Deaf congregants are here to support us in our comments. We have approximately 40 people regularly on Sundays. We have been praying and looking for property. My goal is certainly not to bother anyone who hears. We are noisy in our way, plus the area can be very expensive, you know, looking for land has been prohibitive because of the prices. We finally found the perfect location, behind the land where we are, is very quiet and peaceful. Knowing that our deaf congregants could sometimes be noisy in our worship, and being cognizant of people who hear and are sensitive to noises, we didn't want to get reported, and so we were very careful in our choices. We got a good deal, and in 2010, we purchased. We have been there to this day, and about a month ago, I got ahold of some information about, and I'll show you. I looked at this plot, and I took a walk on the land next door. I realized how very close my church would fall. So if you were to draw a little red line right here, that's where our deaf congregants gather in the worship center. And so this is the exterior wall that I'm pointing to. There's about five feet where, and this is where we turn the music up, like you mentioned, the bass comes up loud, because we don't hear the treble, we like the bass. Deaf people like vibration, and that is part of our... Deaf people like vibration, and that is part of our worship. If we were to host a revival, a Bible conference, which actually we do have on the calendar for March and April, we expect that those would be evenings during the week that would also be high and loud in volume. We have activities, of course, our church is very busy. And so my concern is this area here. Now I'm hearing two feet. We're just finding out this evening that there's two feet. So my church is here, this is our plot. There is also land behind my church that I have purchased in addition to where the church is located. I own both of those lots. In addition, I would like to comment on how deaf people function in the world, and that is, we are a visual people. When our congregants arrive on Sunday mornings and they pull into our parking lot, there is visual peace, and because we are such a visual people, they love the view. I also would like to explain. When we have activities that involve young children, we obviously have a youth ministry, we have a children's ministry. If our teenagers or young ones go outside, which they often do, they tend to play very close to that area alongside Corn Road. And also on the land behind our church, where we allow them to play volleyball. And again, like it's been said before, deaf people are quite loud. We yell, "It's not like hearing people," where people are noise sensitive. We're not noise sensitive, so we have a tendency to be loud. That is very cultural, and that's a way that we move and live in the world. Again, about young children, I have a concern about drivers, the increase of cars as they enter that row. The parking would be just alongside there. The parking here is, the parking would be just alongside there. This is Corn Road. And when we have an overflow of people, we are permitted, we have special permission to park on the grass across Corn Road on the opposite side on the grass. So I do have some concerns about the increased traffic. We have deaf drivers. I would be concerned about them pulling out. I have here a petition from the neighborhood, from areas next door, across, adjacent. And you will see here that we have collected many signatures. The petition specifically says to oppose the, and to appeal the proposed setback on Corn Road. And so this was the appeal. All of these folks are in agreement. So this petition was taken to areas that are next door, across from our church, and of course, our members. If you're interested, I'd be happy, I've got copies for you that I can give to you to add to your file.
If he can submit the original to the clerk, then he can, we'll take the copies of the petition.
The original?
Get it to the clerk, yeah.
I would like to let you know that the deaf members are very proud and excited to have owned a deaf church in Cobb County. There are no other known deaf churches, deaf-owned churches. I can't think of any in the last 30 years in the metro area. There are lots of churches that are basically hearing people, hearing pastors, and they serve a few deaf people. But this is all deaf-led, this is all deaf people, and we are very proud to have this land, to have developed leaders in our community, within our church, to encourage creativity. We have purchased this land, and we are so proud of that accomplishment. It shows the world that deaf people can, when so many say deaf people cannot. And so we're very proud to be in this area. We feel that it is particularly special to this community and to Smyrna. And our language there is American Sign Language. It is part of who we are, and we are a shining light. Just so you know, Cobb County is the first in the history in this area. So, thank you so much for allowing me to share with you today. Thank you.
We actually let the pastor go a little bit over. Is there anyone who have any questions? Mr. Welch.
Dr. Kelly, can you tell me your service times during the week?
So you mean non-Sundays? Oh, Sundays as well, yeah, every day. Oh, every day, okay. We have Wednesday services, we have a Bible study. It starts at 6:00 PM. Before 6:00 PM, people start arriving 3, 4 o'clock because we work on the grounds on Wednesdays. Monday, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, we rarely have people inside the building, but we do occasionally. But thank you for reminding me. We have in the works a teen youth fellowship coming up. It will be starting on Friday nights and Saturday nights. We haven't actually narrowed it down. But it will be every other week. The idea there is that teenagers would come, they'd start about 6:00 at night. We'll have fun activities, probably games and a movie time, things that teens like. And of course, you can expect a certain amount of volume on the videos and the movies that they watch. We also host a couples retreat, or fellowship rather, so that will be coming up. We have a lot that happens on Fridays and Saturdays. Over the course of the weekend, we're very busy. But like I said, Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays would be lighter days. Wednesdays, of course, very busy. Friday, Saturday, very busy, and Sunday, that goes without saying.
During the course of a normal week, how often would there be a band or music played in the sanctuary?
During the week?
Throughout the course of the week.
Okay, yes, we do have live music.
The Sunday services, are they?
Okay, fine, I'll talk about Sunday mornings. So we start arriving, I would say, 9:00. By 10:00, we have Sunday morning classes. We have activities associated with those classes. By 11:00, we start our services, which open with music. That's when the noise and vibration would be, particularly during the praise and worship time.
I got a question. When they made the improvements in 2011 and 2012, did they put any insulation in the sanctuary for the noise?
The building that we purchased was a building block, concrete block walls, cinder blocks, rather. And there is some amount of insulation toward the top, there's a section at the top, but not within those walls that are cinder block. But toward the top, there is a section that is insulated. Yes, sir.
Anyone have any other questions?
When you say that just the top is insulated, is there a reason why the remainder of it is not?
It's cinder block. Yeah, it's cinder block walls. Yeah, three sides, cinder block. Three sides are cinder block walls, no insulation.
The insulation in the attic would just be the normal insulation that people put?
It is not soundproof insulation, no, sir. It is not, it is not soundproof, no. And I would add that it is cement floor, it's not a wood floor. And so we have to really crank it to get concrete to vibrate, like I described before, because it's cement, so. And the sound carries better.
Alright. Any other questions?
Yes, you were answering the question about the music during the week, and I guess I didn't quite understand, other than, you know, I guess Wednesday night and what other nights. Thank you.
So again, on Wednesdays, we do have church activities, and on Sunday, those are our worship days. On other nights of the week, we may have a fellowship or a Bible study. Those tend to be on Fridays and/or Saturdays. Generally, we do a biweekly gathering.
Alright.
Question. Dr. Kelly, if there was no setback change request, would you still have a concern?
I'll just be honest, I prefer for them to be further away from our property. Again, 35, 35 feet, I would have no concern. If the, I'm sorry, if the fifth townhouse were eliminated, and it was a four-townhouse block, allowing them to shift to 35 feet away from our church building, I would be fine with that, no problem. As it is right now, the drawings will show you that it is much too close to our building. They are side by side.
I got a question. He mentioned, the doctor mentioned that he had purchased some property in the back. But what we're showing here is that the church is actually two feet.
I'm sorry, to interrupt, pardon me. Not behind the church, rather, it's more next to the church. So if you can think of where Johnquill Road is, if you can imagine that my church is here, and it's beside my church, what would be essentially behind the townhouses? Does that make sense?
I think so.
You will see my name, Bruce Kelly, on that plot.
Okay, so that's away from, it's north of the property. Right, okay.
Yeah, I believe you're correct, north, yes, that is accurate.
Well, I don't have any questions. But our drawing is showing that the church is actually two feet from the property line. And it's, and the setback should be 30 feet, is that correct? Normal? So actually, the church is 28 feet over the rear setback, if I'm, is that correct, Ken or Rusty?
Yes, the church property is owned general commercial. And the rear setback requirements for the general commercial zoning district is 30 feet.
But their church sanctuary is actually two feet, two to five feet from the property line?
Based on the documentation that we have, yes.
And we discussed this earlier, that the property was annexed into the city, somebody say '97? It was already, I think there was a garage there, and then the church purchased it, I think the doctor said, in 2010? That building would have been there to begin with, the way that I'm understanding it. That the church made modifications in 2011 and spent about $50,000, or had a building permit for $50,000, made the interior, and maybe some exterior also, so.
That's all true.
Yeah.
We did some renovations on the interior side of the church. On the outside, it's pretty much the way that it was as purchased. No significant changes on the outside of the building.
Anyone have any other questions? Thank you very much. Anyone else that was sworn in that wants to make a comment, if you please come forward and... Anyone else? Okay. Alright, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. Miss, you want Mr. Cochran to do this, or you want? I'll wait for your leave.
I know, I've changed my mind about four times. But at this time, I am going to make a motion to deny the reduction of side setbacks from 35 feet to 10 feet. Land Lot 594, 0.53 acres, 1639 Cord Road, Corn Road.
Just clarification?
Motion second.
Clarification, are we vote, how, can you clarify how we're going to vote, affirmative or?
Yeah, and my mic's messing up. Okay, so with a motion to deny, then if you vote in favor of this motion, you will deny the variance. If you vote in opposition to this motion, and if this motion does, if the motion to deny passes, then it's over. If the motion to deny doesn't pass, then I'd expect a cross motion to approve.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion and a second to deny. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Wilkinson, I think, made the second. Alright, although it was in favor of the motion to deny, please vote. Is this not working up here? Three yay and three nay. Is there need to be another motion, Mr. Cochran?
Yeah, I think that'd be the cleanest way.
Alright, need a motion then to approve. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's three to three, and so as I've done in the past, when this comes up, I do not hesitate. I vote in favor of the motion to approve. I think this is a good zoning. I think we're very fortunate to have someone come in at that location to build quality homes, as David Woodbury has in the past. And I think it'll be an excellent added addition to that area, and hopefully spur some additional growth, quality growth. So I'm voting in favor of it. So that's approved, four to three. Item B, C, and D are all the same things. We start off with a public hearing, 2019-56. Public hearing only on a variance request for V19-007 and 008. Reduction of the front setback from 35 to 15 feet, and reduction of the rear setback from 30 to 15 feet for the construction of a new home, 0.113 acres, Land Lot 519, 2475 Adams Drive. Ronald Dickerson is the applicant. Is he here? Okay, this is a public hearing. Excuse me, is anyone here that's in opposition to, that would like to make any public comment concerning this variance request? 2475 Adams Drive. Alright, let the record show there is none. This is in Ms. Blackman's district. Ms. Blackman?
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask Rusty if you'll come forward and do your thing.
Alright, as the mayor stated, this is an annexation with associated variances. The applicant is requesting the annex 2475 Adams Drive, which is located on the eastern side of Adams Drive, just north of Paces, or Pierce Avenue. The subject site has one single-family home. The applicant is proposing to demolish that single-family home and build a new single-family home. The existing lot of record for the site is a non-conforming lot based upon R15 zoning standards. So when you apply the setback requirements for the R15 zoning district, it makes the lot pretty much unbuildable. So the applicant is requesting setback variances to the front and rear. They're requesting to reduce the front setback from thirty-five feet to fifteen and the rear setback from thirty feet to fifteen to be able to build the new home. This is the proposed site plan for the home. As you can see, the lot is relatively small. There is a stormwater pipe that runs along the north side of the property and continues to the rear, so they have to be outside that easement and within the setbacks. These, this is the proposed home elevation. It's a two-story home. This is the picture of the site as it stands today. And then these are the existing properties on either side, on Adams Drive and then across Adams Drive. Community Development is recommending approval of the proposed variances with several stipulations. The first being approval of the variances is stipulated upon the development in accordance to the site plan provided. Number two is a request for five-foot right-of-way dedication along Adams Drive. And number three establishes the minimum setbacks for the property, which is the fifteen-foot front, ten-foot side, and fifteen-foot rear. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions on Mr. Martin? Okay. Let's see, applicant, you wanna step forward? Just tell us who you are.
Yeah, my name is Ronald Dickinson and I want to appreciate Rusty for making that presentation. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the consideration. And thank you for all the things you've done to this, this city. Just basically, I think twenty-four seventy-five is probably the, the last really, really ugly house in that neighborhood. It's from, from, the neighborhood from Reed Street to Dixie Avenue now. It's just really undergone a lot of revitalization. And I think, you know, tearing down this old house and, and building a new one would really, really add to the, add to the value of the street and the, and the neighborhood as a whole. So, thank you for your time. If you have any questions.
Any questions? Anyone have any questions? Thank you. There's not a vote taken at this time. Item C is twenty-nineteen dash thirty-seven, approval of ordinance twenty-nineteen dash zero one, annexation request one hundred percent. Owners requesting annexation of all tract of land lying and being in landlot five nineteen, Seventeenth District, Second Section, Cobb County, Georgia, a total of zero point one-one acres tract, being known as twenty-four seventy-five Adams Drive, Smyrna, Georgia, three double oh way though. The effective date will be March the first, twenty-nineteen, and resides in Ward Three. Ms. Blackman.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve two zero one nine dash three seven, the approval of the annexation request. The tract land lying and being in land lot five nineteen, Seventeenth District, Second Section, Cobb County, total of zero point one-one-three acre tract, being known as twenty-four seventy-five Adams Drive, Smyrna, Georgia.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion. That's approved six zero. Item D, twenty-nineteen dash fifty-nine, is the final vote on the variance request. V nineteen dash zero zero seven and zero zero eight, reduction of the front setback from thirty-five to fifteen feet and reduction of the rear setback from thirty to fifteen feet for the construction of a new home, zero point one-one-three acres, landlot five nineteen, twenty-four seventy-five Adams Drive, Ronald Dixon. Ms. Blackman.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to call for approval of the variance request, V nineteen dash zero zero seven and zero zero eight, the reduction of the front setback from thirty-five to fifteen and the reduction of the rear setback from thirty to fifteen for the construction of a new home, zero point one-one-three acres, landlot five one nine, at twenty-four seventy-five Adams Drive.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion. That's approved six zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Dixon. We're glad you're in the city of Smyrna now. Thank you. Item E through F, E, F, G, and H, and I are all amendments to our current zoning ordinance. Ms. Tammy Satter Jones, you've had a pretty nice evening. If you want to get the background on all of those, then, or you can just get the background on one of them and then we'll call for the public hearing portion.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. While reviewing the zoning ordinance, our community development staff found several either typing errors or areas where there were discrepancies in the ordinance. And so as the mayor mentioned, our senior planner, Rusty Martin, is gonna go through all of these individually, well, as a collectively, and then they will vote on them individually. So I'm just gonna turn it over to Rusty.
All right, let me, Rusty, you can come on up. I'm gonna go ahead and read for the record. This is item four E, ordinance, ordinance twenty-nineteen dash oh three. Public hearing code amendment to the zoning ordinance to update section nine oh eight in regards to the loading space requirement, City of Smyrna. Item F is ordinance twenty-nineteen dash zero four. Public hearing code amendment to the zoning ordinance to update the building permit requirements, City of Smyrna. G, ordinance twenty-nineteen dash zero six, public hearing code amendment to the zoning ordinance to add guest parking for townhomes, townhome and condominium communities, City of Smyrna. H, ordinance twenty-nineteen dash zero seven, public hearing code amendments to the city's code of ordinance to repeal appendix F, G, and H, and I, City of Smyrna. And I, ordinance twenty-nineteen dash zero eight, public hearing code amendment to the zoning ordinance to update section seven one seven, City of Smyrna. And once Rusty gets up here, I'm gonna just let folks know that this is a public hearing. And if anyone wants to make any comment on any of these five changes, we will give you that opportunity. So is anyone here that wants to make a comment? I will ask, even after he makes his presentation, if anyone wants to make a comment. But does anybody now know that they would like to make a comment? Okay, then once we finish everything, Rusty, I'll ask again if there's anyone that wants to make any public comment. Okay?
Okay. Thank you very much. The first zoning amendment deals with loading berth requirements. So every development, commercial development requires a loading space. So we had a little issue with the table that establishes the number of loading spaces per the square footage of the building. We had some overlaps in some sections and then some parts of the range weren't big enough and left gaps in between the ranges. So we're proposing to correct those and come up with ranges that cover every square footage and, and do not overlap. So as you can see in the table, for one loading space, the gross floor area for the building is from ten thousand square feet to thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. And then for two, two loading spaces, it's from forty thousand square feet up to ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet and so forth. So those are the proposed changes for, for that text amendment, relatively easy. The next item are issues dealing with building permits and certificate of occupancies in specifically three sections, thirteen oh four, thirteen oh five, and thirteen oh six of the zoning ordinance. There's just discrepancies in the way that staff implements those ordinances and how they're actually outlined in, in, in the code itself. So we'll go through those one by one here. On the top, you can see is section thirteen oh four. And it, it lays out all the permit requirements for getting a building permit and the need for plans and, and other documents. However, with those building permits, we do not delineate between our standalone permits, which, which are your mechanicals, your electricals, and plumbing permits, which for residential developments, we do not need plans, plans for those. So that first, that first verbiage is dealing with those mechanical permits. The second part of the amendment, it deals with giving the chief building official authorization to waive any permit requirements for plans. Some, some projects are so small that they don't need full set of architectural drawings to take care of. We can take care of some of the issues with, with inspections. So this gives the, the chief building official the authority to, to waive those requirements where he thinks it's necessary. The next item is thirteen oh five, and that deals with the expiration of building permits. And the code currently says the project has to be substantially completed within six months of the date of issuance of the building permit or the, the permit expires. How we enforce that today is the permit expires based off of six months from the last inspection. We have some big projects, projects that would take over six months to complete. If we implemented this according to code, we'd be having to, to update that permit and re-up that permit every six months until they, they completed. So this way, all they have to do is maintain progress on, on the permit and on the work and they can maintain their, their permit. And then finally, for this section is thirteen oh six, and this deals with the issuance of certificate of occupancies. And the existing code says any non-conforming use that is existing at the time of the enactment of this ordinance or an adjustment there to, that has changed, extended, altered, et cetera, should be issued a certificate of occupancy. However, we don't, we don't do that at the moment. If you have a non-conforming structure that does not meet code, we will not issue a CO on that, a new CO on that structure when there's a change of use. We will issue a certificate of completion for the work that is create, that is completed and, and within code. So a lot of times, you'll have a section of the building that is renovated, completed, meets code. We'll issue the certificate of completion for that portion of the building that was completed and not the overall building. It'll maintain its original certificate of occupancy. The next ordinance requirement is for guest parking for townhome and condominium communities. Section nine oh six of the zoning ordinance lays out the parking ratios for specific uses. Currently, we do not have a requirement for guest parking within townhome and condominium uses. And we have been handling most of those requests through zoning actions in front of you guys. So we'll add a zoning stipulation that certain developments would require guest parking. We are trying to codify that and make it part of every development standard at this, at this point. The reason for this code is to keep guest parking from being on-street parking and try to move it to off-street parking so we can keep our streets free and clear and make sure that we have adequate emergency service access to each unit within the development. And with this change, we're proposing one parking space for twenty-five percent of the overall unit totals within the development. So if you have a hundred units within a development, they'd be required to provide twenty-five guest parking spaces for that development. The next proposed zoning ordinance is the repealing appendices F, G, H, and I. These are corridor design standards that are laid out in the city's code of ordinances. However, we have a, a zoning ordinance that also lays out corridor design standards under section seven seventeen of the code. And these codes are pretty much parallel, and we'll, we'll get through this. They have almost the identical requirements, except for there are some conflicting requirements in certain sections. And when we go through the staff review during permitting process, we run into these conflicts and staff has to make a decision of which code is applicable. So our, our proposal is to eliminate appendices F, G, and H and keep section seven seventeen and make that the, the code requirement for the corridor design standards. So we're showing you some of the standards and how they relate across the different requirements and where we have some conflicts. So like South Cobb Drive requires maximum sign area under section seven seventeen of forty square feet. And under appendix F for South Atlanta Road, the, the wall signage for, the maximum amount of wall signage for a building is forty-eight square feet. So one code says forty, the other says forty-eight, and then our sign ordinance says forty. So usually, we, we revert back to forty. And this is throughout these appendices in, in section seven seventeen. So we're trying to clean that up and make it, make it understandable for people coming in that are trying to, to develop their site. Section seven seventeen is the corridor design standards, and those relate to Atlanta Road, Wendy Hill, South Cobb Drive, Concord Road, and Spring Road. We just have some typing errors and some discrepancies that we're trying to correct. We're proposing these changes and, and, and to clean up the ordinance and, and make sure that is completely understandable. And finally, there are sign ordinance requirements within this specific code section that we're requesting to remove because we're trying to keep all our sign ordinance requirements within the sign ordinance, which is chapter eighty-two of the, of the code of ordinances, and keep the zoning ordinances within the zoning section. So that's basically all I got. These are just examples of some of the changes that we're proposing. We're cleaning up CDD four, making it one acre. The second item on there was related to the signs and, and turning that back to chapter eighty-two. And then we're cleaning up the table that's associated with section seven seventeen. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Does anyone have any, on the council, have any questions about any of these amendments to the zoning code?
I have a question. I was just looking through here, Rusty, and I saw a section where it has the UDC and it's crossed out and it's, it's under the appeal procedures, and then it has DDRC. Can you tell me what that means?
That's an error. And I talked to Scott about that and we'll, we'll correct that. It should be the UDC, the Urban Design Commission.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone have any other questions?
I just want to say thank you to the staff for going through what had to be a painfully detailed process of finding all those discrepancies.
We appreciate it. It was, this was highlighted as part of our comprehensive plan update back in two thousand seventeen. So we're keeping track with what we said we were gonna do and bringing this stuff for you. I think we'll have some difficult items here coming up, but we, these are sort of the easier things that we're trying to remedy and make the code a little bit better.
Quick question, Rusty, just to make it obvious, I think that, so none of the intent of any of the code is being changed, right? These are just, like you said, cleanup, we're not changing anything of significance. It's housekeeping, so to speak.
Right. These are, they're relatively minor. They're housekeeping. They're trying to bring the code in line with the way that we operate as a department. And just trying to... And just trying to correct discrepancies between the code and other sections of the ordinance.
So Rusty, can I ask you another question? Just, I'm just trying to understand, I see that a lot of those where it says the CDDs, you know, with the different acreages, or like the minimum adjacent to Atlanta Road, one acre, and then it was three acres on South Cobb, and now it's going to be changed to one acre, and some of the others, can you explain that?
Those were instances where the corridor design standards and then Section seven seventeen were in conflict. So we were trying to meld those two together to try to get to the intent of what was passed whenever these code sections were passed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, I'll ask if there's anyone here that wants to make any public comment concerning E, F, G, H, and I, if you'd like to make any public comment. All right, there is no one. Also, I'll close the public hearing portion on all this and ask Mr. Tim Goode to make separate motions on each one of these.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, thanks to Rusty and Ken and Community Development for working hard on a really tedious task to go through these ordinances and really make it easier for folks to do business here in Smyrna. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Item E, ORD two thousand nineteen dash oh three, Code Amendment for Zoning Ordinance to Update Section nine oh eight in regards to the loading space requirements, City of Smyrna. Item F, ORD two thousand nineteen oh four.
Yeah, we're going to do one at a time. So we're going to do, so you make a motion to approve ordinance twenty nineteen oh three. Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Somebody hadn't voted, or no. You may need to change the batteries in that thing tomorrow. Approve six zero. Item F.
ORD two thousand nineteen dash oh four, Code Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Update the Building Permit Requirement, City of Smyrna.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approve six zero. Item G.
Move to approve Item G, ORD two thousand nineteen dash oh six, Code Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Add Guest Parking to Townhomes and Condominium Communities, City of Smyrna.
Motion second by Mr. Welch. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approve six zero. Item H.
Move to approve ORD two thousand nineteen dash oh seven, Code Amendments for the City Code of Ordinances to Repeal Appendices F, G, H, and I, City of Smyrna.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approve six zero. Item I.
Move to approve ORD two thousand nineteen dash oh eight, Code Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Update Section seven seventeen, City of Smyrna.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approve six zero. Ken, thank you to you and your staff for getting these changes. A lot of work. Item five is previous licenses, we have none. Item six is formal business, A, twenty nineteen dash fifty-three, Authorization to Increase Sewer Rates Per Thousand Gallons From Seven Twenty-Five To Eight Ten Effective February first, two thousand nineteen, to be billed on the March twentieth, two thousand nineteen bills, to recognize that the Cobb County Water approved an eleven-point-six percent increase to wholesale sewer rate charge to the city's effective January first of two thousand nineteen. And I know Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones is going to give the background on that. We got notification of this, I think, two weeks ago. So you just give us the background on that.
Thank you. As the mayor mentioned, effective January first, two thousand nineteen, Cobb County increased the per-thousand-gallon sewer rate charged, charges to the City of Smyrna. Our rates went up from four twenty-two to four seventy-one. The city did not receive any notification prior to the bill that we received from Cobb County. This is an increase of forty-nine cents or eleven-point-six percent for the February bill. Based on consumption, this will be an additional fifty thousand dollars worth of fees on the city's monthly bill. The new rate will be effective for February first, February usage, pardon me, notification as well as the new rate for our residents will be on the March bill for February usage. It is our understanding that the last time that Cobb County did a sewer increase was about seven years ago.
This is a staff recommendation also?
Yes, and this is a staff recommendation.
Mr. Welch, if you'll take that, because Mr. Fenel is not here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All I can really say is we are passing on the rate increase that we have received through Cobb County. I can also say, I certainly wish that they would do a small increase every year instead of hitting us with an eleven percent increase at one time. The one and a half percent that would have been incurred over the course of seven years would have been much easier to digest, but it is what it is. With that, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the increase sewer rate per thousand from seven dollars and twenty-five cents to eight dollars and ten cents effective February first, to be billed on the March two thousand nineteen bills, to recognize that Cobb County water approved an eleven-point-six percent increase to the wholesale sewer rate charge to the citizens effective January first, two thousand nineteen.
Have a motion, motion to adopt the new rates. You want to get a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approve four to two with Ms. Blackburn and Ms. Wilkerson voting in the negative. Okay. Miss, Item B, twenty nineteen dash five-five, Approval of Cobb Framework Agreement, CFA, between Cobb County, Georgia, and the City of Smyrna, Georgia, for Nickajack Road Quiet Zone Railroad Crossing Projects Funded by Splotch for one hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and a county contribution of three hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and twenty dollars for a total cost of five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Ms. Jones, you want to add anything else to that?
I was just going to say, the Quiet Zone project involves the design and installation of a new quiet railroad crossing. The crossing is located at Nickajack Road in Cobb County, approximately point-two-five miles northwest of the intersection of Cooper Lake Road. The city will contribute the remaining one hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. It is necessary to have this agreement approved in order to move the project into the design phase. Cobb County will be the primary responsible party for coordinating the design, engineering, and construction phases of the project, and our Public Works and Engineering Departments recommend approval.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Ms. Sadler Jones explained, this is a project that's part of our two thousand sixteen Splotch program. The county is contributing what looks to be somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty percent of the project cost in there. And I'm sure some of the, or most of the neighbors down in the southwest part of the city will certainly appreciate it. With that, I make a motion to approve Cobb Framework Agreement, CFA, between Cobb County, Georgia, and the City of Smyrna, Georgia, for Nickajack Road Quiet Zone Railroad Crossing Project Funded by Splotch for one hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, with the county contributing three hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and twenty dollars for a total cost of four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approve six zero. Item C, under Formal Business, twenty nineteen dash forty-two, Approval to Accept a Federal Highway Administration Federal Aid Grant Funded by the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program and Awarded through the Georgia Department of Transportation and the Atlanta Regional Commission in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars, and authorized the mayor to execute the sub-grant agreement and related documents on behalf of the City of Smyrna. Ms. Jones, will you give us a background on that, please?
The purpose of the grant is to fund a study that will provide an analysis, a preferred plan, and strategy for addressing the future transportation and land issues and opportunities related to the development of transit systems serving the City of Smyrna. The original grant application was approved, was, pardon me, was authorized for submittal by mayor and council in May of two thousand seventeen and requested a grant of four hundred thousand dollars. The city allocated the required match amount of a hundred thousand dollars as a CIP budget item in the fiscal year nineteen budget. In December of two thousand seventeen, the city was notified that the grant amount awarded was three hundred thousand. This subsequently reduced the required match from the city from one hundred thousand to seventy-five thousand. Due to funding delays in the Georgia Department of Transportation, the grant was not officially afforded to the city until this month. A request for proposal will be issued for the purpose of selecting a consultant to conduct the transit study on the city's behalf. And our community development, pardon me, our community development staff does recommend approval.
Mr. Tim Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, thanks to Community Development for working hard and being persistent to obtain the grant. I think it's going to be a worthwhile study for the city. It'll have to give us, as a city, a chance to understand what transportation systems we want here in our own community and how that'll tie into potential future transit systems in the county. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve two thousand nineteen dash forty-two, Approval to Accept Federal Highway Funds, Federal Aid Grant Funded by the Surface Transportation Block Grant and awarded to the, through the Georgia Department of Transportation and the Atlanta Regional Commission in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars, and to authorize the mayor to execute the sub-grant agreement and related documents on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approve six zero. Item eight is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you read the, I'm sorry, item seven is commercial building permits, we have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, Approval of the February fourth, two thousand nineteen, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, Approval of the February fourth, two thousand nineteen, pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, Approval of the January thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, Committee of the Hold Meeting Minutes. And Item D, Approval of the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, Edward Bernie Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of fifteen thousand, three hundred, twenty-nine thousand dollars for the purchase of a Wayne Coe message board, sign, and trailer, and have the mayor sign any related documents.
Here, motion to approve the consent agenda. Who first, who made, okay. Who first did it? We had a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion? That's approved six zero. Committee reports, we'll start tonight, Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No committee report tonight, but I do want to say thank you to our Parks and Rec Department and staff for putting on the daddy-daughter dance a couple Saturdays ago. My three-year-old kept me out way too late, and we had an awesome time, and they did a really good job with that, so with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
I don't have a report this evening, Your Honor.
Okay. Ms. Marilyn Blackburn.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you so much. As always, I want to say thanks to all my work through your residence, for coming out and hanging with us at our city council meeting. Really appreciate that. Also want to recognize, what did I just do with that? Always like to recognize the new people to the family. Our new hires here in the city was Kristy Caldwell, Heather Alsbrook, Joanne Unkafer, and Brooks Rolland. Welcome to the family. Also want to say that last Sunday, I had the opportunity to introduce Mr. Marchioni, he is a local historian here. It's Black History Month, so he spoke on a gentleman by the name of Tunis Campbell, and that was a very, very interesting lecture. I enjoyed hearing about it and learning more about what this African-American did and his contributions to the country, so that was really incredible. And with that, let me just make sure. I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to thank all the citizens that came out to Arbor Day Celebration on Saturday. Rain held off, and we actually, we sort of cheated planting a tree. It was sort of planted when we got there. But anyway, we had a nice celebration, several people came out, Tree Board was there, and we appreciate everyone coming out. Also, Marilyn has given me a note here that's.
The citizens that came out for the budget input, two thousand twenty.
Oh, thank you, Marilyn. Also thank all the citizens that came out last week for the budget impact that we had at the community center. We had, I think, forty people showed up, had a really good turnout, better than we've had combined for the last three or four years come out to our budget hearings. So seemed to be a good idea that finance came up with, so I look forward to having any input that any of you have. With that, Mr. Mayor, you.
And Ms. Susan Wilkerson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to announce some events that are happening at the library. This is in honor of Black History Month. Gloria Stowers from the Cobb Cluster of the Southern Order of Storytellers will visit Smyrna Library on Thursday, February twenty-eighth at four P.M. to share stories based on the book Henry's Freedom Box by Ellen Levine. Come for an afternoon of entertainment, meaningful, and enlightening stories in celebration of Black History Month. The event will be in the library meeting room on the first floor. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Tim Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple, couple quick things. Let's see, first, congratulations to the Campbell High Girls varsity basketball team for winning their first playoff game. I got to say, they're a lot better than when I was kids, when I was a younger person, but they're fast and they're good. Secondly, a big thanks to Parks and Rec for completing the recent work at the high school baseball field. It's a unique partnership where the city puts a lot of funding into that field and a lot of work goes into it to maintaining a really top-notch facility. Thanks to the baseball parents for their patience. It got done a little bit later than anybody would have wanted to, but they're on the field now and they have it for the rest of the season, so we look forward to further partnerships between the city and the school. Citizen Academy applications are open, right? So if any folks have any interest in that, please look into it. It's a worthwhile experience to learn how the city works and all the great staff and goings on here, so it's a time well spent. And then lastly, thanks to Community Development for a good meeting this week about economic development and what we're doing here to support local businesses and then what we can do to attract additional business here into the City of Smyrna. With that, I yield to Mr. Mayor, thanks.
Ms. Jones, anything else?
Nothing.
Andrews, Mr. Cochran. Ms. Graham, anything? Okay. We have no show cause hearing. We got a couple, three citizens that have signed up. Elcia Glover, sixteen ninety-three, Donna Lynn, Drive, Smyrna, intertained the community event announcement.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak this afternoon. I know it's getting late, so I will be brief, but I just wanted to take a moment to highlight the Unity in the Community Black Heritage Celebration coming up this Saturday. It will be at the Smyrna Community Center, and it will be a great event for family, for friends, and for children. There will be door prizes, food tastings, and there will also be a children's corner. So again, great event for families. So, again, great event for families with storytelling, face painting, arts, and crafts. So, I hope to see all of you there, especially to support the Smyrna Unity and the Community Choir, who I know has been working very hard. So, I hope you guys come out. Again, it is February twenty-third, from twelve to five, at the Smyrna Community Center. Thank you.
Lisa Aldolik, is that right? Forty-two fifty-seven, Mill Grove Lane, southwest Smyrna, Black Heritage Celebration.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for having me. I'm Lisa Delegue, and I've been a citizen of Smyrna for a little over ten years, and I love this city. My husband and I love the diversity that we have in this city and plan to live here a very long time, and I'm excited as well. The young lady that just spoke about the unity in the community and seeing Smyrna get involved in that, it's very important, as well as just come out and support, I'll just repeat what she said, come out and support the Black Heritage Festival this weekend, Saturday, and hope to see you there. Thank you very much.
Dupesys.
I just, sorry, one more thing, apologies. Councilwoman Blackburn, thank you so much for being the spearhead to this event.
Dupesys Timely Alexander, twenty-two eighty-nine, South Cobb Drive, Smyrna, Georgia, Black History Celebration.
Yeah, good evening. Just, my name is Tammy Alexander, and Dupesys African Fashions is excited about the Black Heritage Celebration in Smyrna. We know that this celebration will be great for the community, from the authentic African American food tasting, meet and visit with local African American-owned businesses, children corner with fun educational activities, come enjoy the main stage performances of African drums, dance by ADC, and Stevenson Dance Ensemble, Smyrna historian, special guest speaker, Unity and the Community Choir, fashion show by Dupesys African Clothing Store, free haircuts from one P.M. to three P.M. for boys, ages five to twelve, provided by Goodfellas Barber Shop and Redfield Jones Hair Salon, free hair care products for girls provided by Just for Girls Hair Salon, Hair for Dazed and Alters Hair Wellness Salon. Come join us, thank you.
That's the last speaker. Only comment I'd like to make is that we didn't go as a date, but I did go to the Campbell basketball game Friday. If you haven't been by their new gym, it's really nice. I think it seats thirty-five hundred, it was probably a hundred and fifty people there, which was not a lot, but they, the girls played good.
There was more people than that, it was, it was a good crowd.
It was, yeah, a hundred and twenty-five yelling, screaming folks, so. Anyway, if there's no other business to be brought for this body, I'd like to clear this meeting adjourned at eight-thirty-two. Terry.
I was telling them yesterday. Saint Thomas the Apostle? I thought King's Springs. I don't know if they're all gonna come, but I gave them a lot of information, I texted several of them, and then I texted the choir director. It'd be great to take a seat, I'd love hearing them. This is trying to be the other one. Carolyn reached out, and she had talked to me about my work. So, she's worked on everything, so she would have been perfectly in touch. It is. So, over ten years.